United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
For a second?
Second.
Matt?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Lynette?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Moving on to appointing our new board secretary, do I have a motion to appoint Shelby as our secretary?
I'll make a motion to appoint Shelby, how do you say your last name Shelby?
Gao.
Gao, thank you, as the board secretary effective eleven one twenty twenty five.
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Lynette?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes, motion carries seven zero, thank you Shelby for a second. And congratulations, yes. All right, item number four, do I have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
Make a motion adjourn.
Adjourn.
Adjourn. Into executive session to discuss MSBA John T. Belcher Scholarship, applications by closed vote, closed record pursuant to RSMO six ten dot zero two one, section fourteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Matt?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Lynette?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes, motion carries seven zero, readjourned to go into executive commission or session.
We, let's announce.
All right, for number five, the announcement of the twenty five twenty six Belcher Scholarship nominee going to state is Samantha Martin. And then this year we had three applicants, so we are providing each of those applicants a two hundred and fifty dollar scholarship. And the other two applicants, should I announce that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, let's see, Jordan McEwen and then Maria. Herrera Amia. Hopefully I said those names right, Brad, did I?
Marley.
Marley? Okay, sorry if I mispronounced someone's name, but congratulations to the three applicants. All right, moving on to number six, public comment. Shelby, do we have any public comment?
Yeah.
All right, moving on to number seven, president's comments. For the November employees of the month, we have certified staff member Matt Kimball, who is the EL, ELA teacher at the Mexico High School. He is a first year teacher this year, um, his nominating colleague shared, Matt is rocking it as a first year teacher, he's doing a fantastic job connecting with his students and a wonderful teaching job. It is obvious that he cares about his students, so we congratulate Matt. The second employee of the month is support staff Kevin Fields, who is a bus driver, he has been a member of our staff since tw- twenty sixteen. Kevin's nominating colleague shared, Kevin is always, always greets kids with a smile and makes them laugh early in the morning, he goes the extra mile to make sure everyone is safe, congratulations to Kevin. Anyone else have anything to say? All right, moving on to item eight. Approval of the bills that require extensions. Do I have a motion for one?
Motion to approve payment for bills below as presented, check number ACH zero one three two seven six to Central Bank Mastercard. Check number one four two seven nine nine, partners for rural impact and ACH zero one three two hundred for Kelly Sunwell for forty nine eighty five.
Second.
Scott?
Epstein.
Michelle?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Lynette?
Stain.
John?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes, motion carries five zero two. Do I have a motion for number two?
I'll make a motion to pay ACH, check number ACH zero one three two five nine to Ameren for twenty eight thousand three hundred seventy dollars and eighty five cents.
Second. Matt?
Yes.
John?
Stain.
Lynette?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes, motion carries six zero one. Moving on to consent agenda, does anybody have any questions before we have a motion? Dawn, you have anything to say about? Treasurers, no? All right, do I have a mo- uh, motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Lynette?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes, motion carries seven zero, on to reports and presentation, superintendent's report.
Continue to engage that community groups, uh, appreciate Ms. Welch for going to the Altruda Dinner Auction and then last night. Represented the district at the state of the community event, sponsored by Chamber of Commerce. Facilities, for the most part, everything's been going pretty smoothly, I don't wanna pretend like there haven't been any issues. Boiler startup in the Willer Wing, uh, didn't go quite as smoothly as we'd like it to, uh, but it's been resolved. Heat is running rooftop units at sports complex, are more efficient than our previous units, however, they also are more sensitive to drops of gas pressure, so we have to get a new regulator installed, increase pressure to the sports complex. And then we have to have additional regulators installed to lower the gas pressure to the hot water heaters for, the gas pressure will be too high and blow the hot water heaters up. We don't want that, so that work is supposed to happen next week, that's something that they, they should have caught, it's not a change order, we're eating the cost on those, uh, regulators. To this point, we've been able to get by with the sports complex of running one, as long as we run one rooftop, uh, unit, there's enough gas pressure to keep it going. If, if additional units kick on, using too much gas and it drops, so, uh, so far it hasn't been too big of an issue, it wasn't resolved, we probably have problems when we got to the deep winter. Uh, work at the middle school continues on schedule, um, really hope to have punchless walk for the kitchen the first week of December, after that we have to, uh, schedule the health inspection. So, uh, the kitchen will be finished in December, but we will continue to serve what we've been serving at the, at the middle school, which is not ideal, but, um, uh, you know, when Joyce has to make the order for groceries, she has to do it based off of, you know, what it could be in December, so that the Lunchables have already been bought for December. We'll get back to chicken patties and square pizzas when they come back to school at the beginning of the year. Uh, work at the tennis court is progressing, they pour concrete on, it's, it's gonna be two pours, three slabs or one pour, uh, post tension concrete and then, um, I believe they're trying to get in there and do the second pour tomorrow, they'll have to get all the, the cable laid out and the, the moisture barrier before they can do that, so. I don't know how much they, how far along they got with that today, but it's, uh, it's time to see that go. Tennis court needs ninety days to, to cure before they can apply the top coat and the striping, that can't be applied until we have overnight lows that stay above like forty five, so we're a little bit at the mercy of the elements. On getting it over the, the finish line. Detailed, um, where we are financially with it, I, I will say, I'm not trying to jump over any of the process, but this is what it would look like if the elevator proposal that you'll vote on later and the gym floor proposal, if you were to accept those. Where we would be and once you get into design fees, which are now down below eight percent because we've got, we have more under con- under contract than we did last time I reported this. We're at fifteen million and the original budget was, uh, twenty million six hundred fifty thousand, we did generate more money from the bond, uh, because of the premium sales, so there's twenty two million in there, so. We're, we're looking at about six point eight million dollars for the remaining projects, remaining projects, high school secure entryway, Evans, uh, HCC renovations. And then we'll have to address the sports complex elevator, so. Got, got some pretty big projects going out the bid that are left on that list, so I hope, I hope, I, I hope things continue to go as they have, I think FSG did a pretty good job with ballparking costs and getting us through the process and, um, writing project manuals that, that the bids are based off of, that would, would fall within, within our budget. Finance after two pay cycles for our teachers, I mean, that's what drives all the fund two, our instructional expenditures are on, on track to stay within the budget. Elementary fund two expenses, we're at six hundred ninety four thousand so far, it's eighteen percent of the budget, high school fund two expenses are four hundred forty four thousand, it's about seventeen percent of the budget, so. Administrators are on, you know, they've had more than two pay cycles in because they're, they're not nine month in bullying, so we're. Expenditures are tracking about where, where we would like them to be and as far as in the operating, in terms of operating budget, you know, that's almost all salaries, so. Feel relieved about that, um, APR, probably like to spend the most time on this, DESI released the annual performance report from Missouri School Districts on November sixth. District score, district earned seventy five percent of the twenty twenty five APR points, it's an improvement from the seventy one point two percent earned in twenty twenty four. Gains are observed in academic achievement, uh, mathematics and academic achievement, academic achievement growth, mathematics, academic achievement growth, social studies and success ready students, advanced credit, uh, APR, supporting report, summary reports are included in the superintendent's report. I am in a, I'm lighting my screen, I don't know. Marcy's driving that, if we click on the summary report. That shows, yeah, MCP six started in twenty twenty two. And it shows the historical trend, you'll notice that there's a difference in the total, uh, points possible between twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, so there's been some changes, some of that has been due to, uh, COVID and not having comparable years, especially in, in grade span tests like science and social studies that they take. Only, you know, social studies, they're only taking that in high school, science, they only, they take one in middle school, to fifth grade, eighth grade, biology one. So that, that, you know, if you're looking at percentages, it's not based off of the same amount, but, uh, we do see improvement, um, and then if you look on the performance report, uh, performance totals, you can kinda see how they award points, um, points are. I'll point out that as far as performant, performance totals, points are earned in quartiles, you either earn zero, three, six, nine or twelve, so. If you're looking at it, you're like, well, if we could just earn seven somewhere, just edge it up just a little bit, it's not possible, you have to go from six to nine. Which I, I wish they didn't score it that way, but. They're not really open to suggestions either. If you look at academic achievement status, those are based off of just really proficiency rates, flat proficiency rates, if you look at, um, if you scroll down and you see academic achievement growth, it's a little more convoluted, uh, the state of Missouri sets a predicted score for every state, so. John, they already know what your son should score next year, they've already determined it, you don't have to question the process, they hired an economist from the University of Missouri to figure out the formula for this, so. So the kids take their math tests and then they take them again the next year, and if their score is higher than what their predicted score is, that's good. And you would say, let's celebrate that, but there's more, it depends on how much higher it is relative to other students' growth, so we can't just celebrate the growth of all kids, we have to make it the Hunger Games. And your growth is better than my growth, so there's more points here and so that's a little bit. If you really, if, if you wanna spend some time down a rabbit hole, read the MCP six comprehensive guide and I don't know if that'll give you more confidence or less confidence in how we evaluate schools in Missouri. But we were able to, to me, the, the message here is with mathematics and social studies, according to the state standards at the individual level, our kids' growth exceeded expectations, so, um, it's a different way to look at it than if you just look at proficiency rates, so I think it shows that our, our teachers are teaching, our kids are learning. We're not where we wanna be, but I think that there's evidence to say that we're, we're headed the right direction.
You mean we've got good news for public education, is that what you're saying?
I'm sure that the state representatives will see this improvement and really can increase their commitments to public education when they get into session in the spring.
Well, legal betting starts December first, but I'm not sure I'd place my bet on that.
Right, right, maybe we'll get rich off of gambling. Another place that I do wanna point out that I think is, is, uh, instructive for us, if you look at success ready students, um, advanced credit, we got seven and a half points there, last year we got five. This last year was the, the, the highest percentage of students, uh, from Mexico High School that graduated with an A or a B in a dual credit class. And if you think about why that happened, it's because we funded it. We pay, anybody that wanted to take a dual credit class could take a dual credit class because of the PIM grant, because of the relationship with PRI and C two C, so, um, and, uh, not to push my cynicism on the room too much, but I, I do believe that more affluent communities are always gonna do better on these sorts of measures than, than communities that are not as well off, and to me this proves it. Cause if you're in a community where everybody can afford dual credit classes, you're gonna max out those points, and if you're not in a community where everybody can afford it, it's more of a hill. But when we paid for it, our kids are able to achieve. And I think if you ask most parents, they would say an A or a B on a college transcript is maybe a little bit more important to me than whether my kid was basic or proficient on third grade ELA. So I would try, I'll try not to really drag everybody through my entire TED Talk. But I'll go back to the superintendent's report, I know that we always, as I said, we, we kinda wanna know how do we stack up? You know, like, and, and I think, to me, I don't know, I don't get a lot of satisfaction from throwing all of our neighbors' APR scores on a piece of paper and putting it out there, cause I think everybody's doing the best they can to fight the battle they're fighting, and I think that we have. I think we have neighbors, but we don't really have peers, like, the, the districts that touch us are all, more than half as small. And, um, and I, and I also think there's different conversations around poverty in Mexico, seventy eight percent of our kids are on free and reduced lunch, so I think we have to respond to that differently. So, uh, if you look at this scatter plot, you can find Mexico, I didn't put anybody's name on it, but if you scroll along the, the seventy five line and get about to eighty, that's us. So you see there's kind of a cluster of, of the schools that do score the highest on the APR and they end up in the top left, so. That, the axis on the left is total points scored and the axis on the bottom is, uh, free and reduced lunch count and, um, to me, this is a better way of looking at the data than. How do we do compared to community or how do we do to North Callaway, I will say that if you did eight school districts, including Columbia. I think Columbia, Centrally, I mean, I've looked at it, Columbia, Centrally, Union, or North Callaway, Community, Van Far, Moberly, we're like pretty much smack dab in the middle there. And there's, you know, differences in us and the ones above us that are not, not too great, but.
Are you able to break down how we're doing with school districts our size and with maybe the same?
Yeah, this is what I attempted to do here, cause this, this is only for, what I have here is only for districts of over two thousand students. And, and I've been in districts with, that are very small, and so I've had years where like our APR was really good and then this year it's not, because when you have, if your fifth grade class is only twenty kids. And you can have some wild swings and it, and a lot of times it can be just based off of how many kids do you have in there that have legitimate learning disabilities, so. That's another reason why I would, I'd hesitate to really, you can find all this stuff publicly about where people are, but. So, I mean, I think, one, one thing that stands out to me when I look at this, there's not very many schools that have higher free and reduced lunch counts than, than Mexico. So I think we live in Mexico and so we, we love it here and I love our kids and I love our families, but I don't know, I don't know if we always understand how different it is in some other places and then. You know, I think we should look for places that are having high impact with high poverty kids, but if you look at this, I think we have to maybe consider the fact that we're the ones that are doing it, and maybe people are looking at us and saying, how are they getting there, so, I mean, I'm not, not gonna be satisfied, I think we all have to do the best we can, our kids deserve the best education they can get. And I think the kids come, that come from part poverty are very, very smart, I think they, they learn, I think they're learners, I think we see that in our student achievement growth score. But if you, you come into kindergarten at five years old and your kindergarten readiness is not the same as some people that have been able to go to a really nice pre-K or pay for school, then you start out a little behind and if you, uh, have to move a lot when you're a kid or, you know, you've got certain things going on, it's, it's a headwind, so I think, um. Uh, those are my thoughts, I just feel like we got it, we have to honor our teachers, we have to honor our kids, we have to honor our families, I feel like we don't do that if we don't talk a little bit about the context that we operate in in Mexico.
Uh, the schools that are on the hundred percent with free and reduced, can you just give, throw out some names?
Uh, I, I don't know for sure, I'm gonna guess that they're almost all in, like that little belt in Saint Louis or Kansas City or down in the Boo Hill. Cause to get a school that has over two thousand, I mean, that kinda limits you to certain areas. And I don't even know down in the Boo Hill, there may not be too many that are that big.
Cape.
Yeah, Cape is.
Jackson.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and maybe, when you get to like a, like a, a real big town like Columbia, I mean, their free and reduced lunch percentage is somewhere around fifty percent, so, I mean, sometimes when you get big enough, you have enough, like Cape could be a town where maybe it's not as, as high as we think it is because of the university and the hospitals and.
Was this something you put together or is it on the website, on the APR?
No, this is Troy downloading, cause they don't put it together, they don't.
I've been through the esker, esker, or exercise of grabbing ten or fifteen communities around us and trying to do this whole thing, so if you had found a tool that did this for you, I was.
You know what you do is you go to the spreadsheet that has every school district's, uh, name and free and reduced lunch count, pull it down, then you go to the spreadsheet that has the APR. It's a little bit of neuroses. But I can show you my work if you want.
No, I, I remember doing something like this last year, it was a long night, so, I appreciate you doing this.
Or Marcy will show you how to put it in AI and it'll all do it for you.
Yeah, yeah, and I think it could, I think, and when I, when I was doing it and struggling and making sure that I had to, make sure I had the, man, it's, I don't wanna, like I said, I don't want this to be my TED Talk, I was sitting there, the whole time I'm like, I know. I would just listen to how Marcy explained this, I could dump this in the Gemini and it would do it for me. But there's a satisfaction in doing it yourself, not to be a caveman.
Amen.
Right?
This one's a little off though.
What's that?
This dot's a little off.
Yeah. Which dot? Man, this is the second time today where it's been like, I'm messing with you now. Uh, I'll take questions if you want, I like to talk about, I like to talk about this stuff more than I like to talk about.
On these ones, on the, uh, uh, comparison, uh, or twenty twenty four one I'm looking at, I'm trying to, I always get confused on these, between all students and student group.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. So you've got all students and you've got student groups, so this is another thing that DESI does, and it's all based off of like No Child Left Behind, uh, I mean, I can, George Bush, when he put out No Child Left Behind, he's trying to save kids from the soft bigotry of low expectations, and so your school could be good, but if you had certain groups that were not performing well, and it was, I mean, students on free and reduced lunch, students on IUPs and racial minorities. Like if, if, school could be doing great, but if those kids aren't doing good, maybe you're hiding things, sweeping under the rug, so the idea is you have to separate that and report those as a group.
That's part, that's the student group.
That's the student group, and, and so. So that's gonna be, it's kinda combined them now, a- all of those groups, and the thing that makes it, and another place, thanks for asking this question, cause I can go on down my.
Sorry.
My paranoia.
Uh, sorry, sorry to everyone out there.
But it, so, let's think about if you're in a district that has, like Centr- Centrally, I try not to mention line names, but, like they have about twenty five percent free and reduced lunch, so their student group is.
That twenty five?
Yeah, that twenty five percent, and so that's, that's, but, and then their, there's, their whole group is much bigger. So if you get to a district that's above fifty percent free and reduced lunch, your student group is your group, if you're at seventy eight percent, your student group is your group, so. To be successful, you have to really dial in and, 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 and meet those kids where they are, and then so you're trying to meet a kid where he is when he comes into kindergarten if he's a little bit behind. Uh, and you get him almost to grade, grade level, but not quite, um, by the map standards, you know, and then they go to first grade. Try to keep, but the, the standards have risen just a little bit, that's how we end up in fifth grade and everybody's mad because they can't multiply and divide fractions and, um, because the, you haven't had the pre, it keeps jumping and you keep trying to build your kids up to that level. I guess one thing, and then one thing I'd also like to be really clear about is I think our district proves this as well, that kids that come to us and they have that support at home, they're not held back by going to school. Like, middle class, upper class kids aren't held back because they sit next to somebody that's struggling, and, and I think Mexico proves that, I think we don't have the state championship academic team. If everybody's getting, I think, I think our kids do reach both, so, but Matt, back to the student group, that's what it is, those are those, they used to call them subgroups. They decided that was poor form, now they call it student group and, uh, it's our students on free and reduced lunch. And IUPs and minority students, that's what the state requires, so, and I, and I think it's all, has the right motivation behind it, but I think if year after year after year after year, you keep demonstrating that you're penalizing the same communities, I wish somebody take a look at it and say maybe, maybe there's more going on than just what the schools can control.
Right.
Thank you for coming to my TED Talk. School board election's coming up again, around every year. The, I guess we wanna put this out, try to over communicate it as much as you can, people have to receive the communication or read it, or we actually receive, it's tricky, we're tricky all the time, but. Um, the state moved back, uh, to end the school board filing, so that it has to be done before the end of the, uh, calendar year, which makes it not much fun to work in central office over the holidays, but there's some times when we, we aren't gonna be here, we wanna be clear about that. Columbia got themselves in a big stink a couple of years ago, cause a candidate tried to file on a day when the board office was advertised it was gonna be closed and, so, as best as we can, let people know that we're gonna take some time off, but. So a school board candidate finally begins on December ninth, Ms. Eckert. Then begins on December ninth, Ms. Brown. December ninth is when it opens, man, so, um.
Five AM?
I'm coming, the, yeah, I mean, I hope it doesn't look like, uh, Black Friday doorbusters. But, I mean, it is democracy and I don't wanna see any more. I should probably move on.
Yes.
Uh, next month will be our liability, we buy liability and property insurance through a co-op. Uh, next month will be our liability, we buy liability and property insurance through a co-op. Co-op is Music, is our United School Insurance Consortium, so the, the general guiding philosophy is that the co-op. Negotiates the best rate that it can for its member district. Ninety percent of the districts in Missouri belong to the co-op. If you leave the co-op, can't come back for five years. Their rate is out, um, so the renewal for twenty twenty-six is gonna be seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Which is quite a bit, but I, I figured it out, I think it's like about two percent of the operating budget, which, I don't know what I pay for. Car and homeowners insurance compared to my personal operating budget, whatever it is, it's too high. Unlike my personal. Property insurance, for Music, uh, deductibles are a thousand dollar deductible, and then they cover everything from there, and then. You can go see quotes, I don't know how anybody. But, uh, trying to set the risk for having an organization with four hundred employees and over two thousand kids, and. As many campuses as we have, so, if you want to have, give people a chance to mull on it, I think it's probably in our best interest to stay in the consortium with Music.
Is there a breakdown of that seven hundred and forty-four that is workman's comp first?
Yeah, yeah, and I, that'll, I can, I can do a better job of putting it out there, and, and your workman's comp is not, uh, so we all share a risk. Like, a previous school district, uh, one of the cheerleaders falls off the pyramid. So it covers students. It didn't impact our rates any higher than it would have if it would have happened in two school districts over, so we all share a risk like that. On workman's comp, you're on your own, like, if you can't, uh, keep that down as best you can, your, your mod goes up. So, yeah, it, it gets, there's a breakout for how much is liability, how much is property, how much, I don't have it with me right now, or I can share it out.
Yeah, when it comes out next month. It doesn't, well, you said student twice, that's why I'm confused.
Yeah, music covers students. Yeah. I got, focus on work.
So this is workman's comp for staff and employees. Uh, district liability for property and buildings, and then also student.
Yeah, yeah, if a student has an accident, um, or, uh, litigation.
Well, that's why it's so high, can't trust students.
I'm not gonna agree with you on YouTube, John.
I tried, I, I laid the.
Glad you're not up for election this time.
But yeah, yeah, it's a, a different, different environment having that, you know, over two thousand, uh, developing humans running around, because they can do all sorts of. Interesting things.
Change subject.
Julie. Get me out of this.
Uh, so I talked to you like, guys last month about, um, developing a focus group for AI. Um, so we have our, our leadership group, and we met this past week and watched the webinar called Unpacking AI Literacy. From Quality Curriculum to District-Wide Implementation, it was just an hour-long webinar, but it really laid out the steps that. A district would follow to educate, communicate, um, all the things for AI. For educators to be able to use quality AI programs to their benefit, um, and then for us to teach students. How to use AI as a resource, and I looked up that statistic that I couldn't remember last month. It was ninety percent of the jobs for our kindergartners when they are in the workforce, ninety percent of the jobs supposedly. Will have some kind of basis in AI, so it's super important for us to get on board with teaching our students. Um, about AI, and then, uh, we developed our group, we've got a few admin on the, in the group. Anna, and, uh, one of her tech assistants, Aiden, and we are, we have our first meeting scheduled, and we'll start laying out our framework. Making our three-year plan. Uh, for federal programs, I just got back yesterday afternoon from the federal programs conference that Desi puts on. Uh, big focus that I had for learning at the conference was about equitable services for non-public schools, for Title I services. The, the state historically has allowed districts to use what's called bypass, and that's where this third-party vendor. Um, you would pay the money that's allocated for your non-publics. We have students that reside in our area who go to non-public schools, so we have Saint Brennan, Saint Peters in Fulton, Saint Joseph in Martinsburg. MMA, Father Tolton in, in Columbia, and if students meet qualifications. Need to be considered economically deprived, and they are low achieving, then they qualify for Title I services. And so part of the money that's allocated to us then is allocated to our students in non-public schools. Okay, in the past, we've used a company called Catapult to provide those services. Catapult takes care of hiring the teacher or the tutors that work at those schools to educate students who reside in our area. Who are economically deprived and low achieving. The state has now said, no longer will we use a third-party vendor, and school districts will be responsible for those services themselves. So, um, we, this year, have had to write what's called a bypass removal plan. Or an equitable services plan, they have two different names for it, we had to submit that after consulting with representatives from all of those schools. And develop our, our plan, how will we identify students who are low achieving, what tests will we administer to them? What resources will we use at those schools that we can all agree on? Because those schools don't necessarily use the same assessments as we, as, that we do, but some of those assessments that they use aren't evidence-based. And research-based and norm-referenced standardized tests that we would say are valid tests. So we have to agree on what tests we're gonna administer, and what services we're gonna provide once we identify students. Um, I submitted that plan back in October, then they, they come back and say, these are the revisions you need to make, we consult again. We make the revisions, we submit the plan, then at this conference, we learn more, and we're now in round three of revisions. So, we will get there, and those, that service will start next year, we are already providing services, but through Catapult. And next year will just be directly from us. Uh, for curriculum instruction, I feel like I say the same thing every month, we're, we're constantly working towards improved instruction. In, um, reading, ELA, math, um, this year we have a focus on looking at the writing instructions. Our literacy team met this past month, we, we do meet monthly, uh, I threw a lot of district data at them. We looked at the reading scores for the I-Ready for the last five years. Both fall, winter, or all of them, fall, winter, and spring, and we compared from year to year, fall to fall, year to year, spring to spring. Years' growth for the last five years total, um, overall, we, we do need to prepare a district literacy plan. It is required by MSET Cycle Two, that's something that Dr. Lenz and I will have to upload for the state early next year. Or in the spring.
Yep.
And so we are working on developing that, um, one of our goals that our team identified is the need for our students to have a stronger vocabulary. Of course, we're focusing on phonics, that's the, the most basic foundation skill that students need for reading. But the next step beyond that is to focus on the vocabulary, and once we can get students to have a better vocabulary, that's when we. Can build their comprehension skills, um, the middle school had already started this work through their grant that they received. And they've had a company called TNTP working with them, we all met over the summer and developed the middle school's comprehensive literacy. Plan and their goal, again, looking at all of the data, middle school level vocabulary. Um, so we thought it was interesting that when we looked at the elementary data, that that's where we landed too, and so it matches. We're going to have the K-eight goals aligned.
So we're just passing it down further down the line?
Yeah.
So we're not playing catch-up so much in the middle school?
Right.
Is the goal.
Right, that's the goal, yeah, um, we also did send out the survey to the teachers about their writing instruction. Um, we analyzed the results of those, uh, well, no, we, we talked about the results, we'd only had ten teachers respond at that time. So we're still looking for more teachers to respond to that, um, overall, they are concerned about the writing curriculum. Our math team met last month, and we've had another meeting today, um, our math coach, Ms. Lenz. Has been working on, with grade-level teams on the standards crosswalks, where you look at the Missouri Learning Standards. And Common Core standards, and our grade-level standards, and match it with what the curriculum provides as standards. And see where they match and where they don't, where we would need to supplement, so far we have not needed to supplement. Um, but that will help ensure stronger alignment and clarity of instruction for our teachers and students. Uh, for the secondary level, our instructional coach, Laura Bronk, has been working pretty intensely with middle school and high school teachers. On developing proficiency scales for teaching and learning, and they're now beginning to incorporate those scales into their daily instruction. Again, to improve clarity, consistency, and student engagement, and I know Mr. Elbrock talked quite a bit about that in his board report for the high school. Uh, the district held a PD day on Friday, November seventh, we had a variety of training sessions at different buildings. All of the elementary's teachers participated in a half-day of math training, focusing on their next module. So they could prepare for that and have a good understanding of what they'll be teaching. The math teachers on our team, our math team acted as the leaders for each session. Really, uh, impressed with their work and thankful for them, and then a variety of other topics, um. For the other half of the day at the elementary, and then the middle school and high school. A couple of buildings had their intruder response training with Mexico Public Safety, which includes our SROs training them on what to do if there's. An active shooter or an intruder in the building. Um, some schools talked about Panorama, using that program to help analyze data. Um, writing effective SL plans is a topic in a couple of buildings, the district is required to provide two hours at minimum. Of training for teachers on dyslexia, and how to identify students who are at risk for dyslexia, and then what to do once you do identify them. So, several buildings included at least an hour of dyslexia training during this PD day. Uh, we had a couple of buildings talking about AI, and then, of course, reading literacy resources, the middle school hit really hard. Um, Ms. Diamond, he went and talked about special education accommodations at a couple of buildings. And then the high school and middle school talked about proficiency scales in teaching and learning. For assessment, the seniors and a handful of juniors took the ASVAB in late October. The ASVAB, don't ask me what it stands for, but it measures their, uh, skills and potential for military service. It provides results to them that help them identify suitable military job roles based on their individual strengths. So in case a student is at all interested in the military, they would see where their skill strengths match up to some jobs in the military and. Help them along with that path. And the high school is currently in its first benchmark assessment cycle window, using Master Connect to administer track assessments. Uh, Mr. Elbrock also wrote about that in his board report. And finally, we have a, a table for you with your teacher conference attendance, so each building reported. In a spreadsheet to my assistant, Deanna, um, the number of students they have, the number of parents who physically attended the conferences. And then, if they couldn't attend, they either had a phone conference or an email conference. And if we couldn't get ahold of a parent in any of those forms, then we just mailed their students' information to them, or hand-delivered.
How many parent-teacher conferences do we have a year, just one now?
Yes, only in the fall.
Is there a, this is me not knowing the history behind it, I guess, is there a reason why we went to just one versus, I, I distinctly remember having two.
Very low attendance for the spring conferences.
I will say, there in the spring, we do still meet with those kids, like, we still have a, um, the time where we contact parents. And ask them if they want to come in, but it's not a whole week that's mandatory, or, I shouldn't say mandatory, but like.
Promoted.
Yeah, it's not as promoted, but we do reach out to parents and say, do you have, you want to meet with us?
And it's mostly for students who have RSPs, reading successfully.
Okay, so we are.
For students with RSPs, we're required to have four contacts with parents, that can include letter, phone calls, in-person meetings. And emails, um, but with RSPs, we do prefer, if we can, to have some in-person.
Thanks for the clarification.
Julie, with your bypass program option, whatever, how many kids is that actually gonna be, do you think?
Well, mostly all of the students at Saint Brennan's, I would say about ninety-five percent of the students there are our resident students. But only about fourteen of them qualify to be economically deprived. Uh, we only have about four students at Saint Joseph, and none of them historically have qualified as economically deprived. Um, we only have one student at Father Tolton, which is a high school, and therefore we don't service that. Because our district only serves kindergarten through fifth grade at the elementary level, and we are only required. To offer comparable services at the non-publics, which would mean we would only serve their elementary students. Like we serve our elementary students, so, uh, and same for MMA. Um, Saint Peters, we only have three, two students there that are siblings, and they have not qualified as economically deprived either.
And MMA would just be the, the kids who are from Mexico.
Correct, uh, which there were four last year, again, they're all high school, so they don't get Title I services. They do, however, qualify for Titles Two, which is the professional development, teacher quality, and then Title Three for ELM.
What about like gifted programs and all that?
That's a whole separate situation for under special education, Ms. Diamondkey handles that. She does provide services for gifted and special education for students who are homeschooled and attending non-publics.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions?
I just want to say too, up under the parent-teacher conferences, I know that we say in the fall, but I know. Teachers will make themselves available when you go up and you wanna, you wanna call and say, hey, I want to talk to you about my student. I know teachers have always made themselves available, and I think parents need to, they don't have to wait till a parent-teacher's conference, say this week. That it's any time, hey, if I'm seeing anything, or I'm having any issues, I can pick up the phone and call and schedule an appointment with the teacher, and the teacher's always. Available, so I thank all the teachers and staff for that.
I agree, and also, another reason that we just continue having spring conferences is because we, um. We started using a student information system that parents have access to through the parent portal, twenty-four hours a day, every day of the week, you know. Parents can always check their kids' grades, back in the day when they had to look at the grade card. Only to get the, how the kid is doing or call to school, that we needed to have more conferences in person. But now, parents have access all day, every day to check their students' grades that are updated weekly, hopefully.
More missing assignments.
Daily, yeah, missing assignments.
I will say, ParentSquare has been a, I've probably had more interaction in the last two years with ParentSquare than previously, so it's greatly appreciated.
Just even without the in-person, that, that, the communication is higher now.
I've just had, I hate to say people my age, ask me that question several times, like, when did we go to that, and I didn't know if there was a driving factor.
Yeah, it, it's that you, you now have access all the time.
Okay, moving on to building reports, any of the admin want to say something, highlight? Good to go. Brad, you look like you want to talk. All right, moving on, communications report, Marcy, you're on the spot, nope, all right, new business. Personnel, do I have a motion to approve personnel as listed?
I'll make a motion, approve personnel as listed.
Second.
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Lynette?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes, motion carries seven zero, item two, approval of twenty-five, twenty-six probationary contracts, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six probationary contracts as presented, second.
Matt?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Lynette?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes, motion carries seven zero, item three, per, uh, approval of twenty-five, twenty-six extra duty agreements. Do I have a motion?
That's not for us, right, that's a grant paying for the legos, right? Correct, okay. We just have to approve them. I make a motion to approve twenty-five, twenty-six extra duty agreements, second.
Scott?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Lynette?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes, motion carries seven zero.
Before we leave personnel, I just have a few things.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to bring up a couple of things that we're working on for recruitment and retention, so that you guys have some time to think about it before I bring it to you. Um, one thing I want to give a shout-out to our instructional coaches, they went to, um, off. Um, one thing I wanna give a shout out to our instructional coaches, they went to, um, all three of them did the job fair for me, uh, two weeks ago, I think it was. And it's always better for them to be there than me because they know the classroom and I just love when they go. They have a lot of energy and I think they got to talk to quite a few people. Um, they're also working on our sub-training. We're trying to redo that and get our subs feeling a little more comfortable. One of the main questions I keep getting from our substitutes is what do I do if there is an intruder or there's a fire or things like that. So we're making sure that our, our um, handbooks and things that they get are up to date and they have a lot more information. So when they're going into our classrooms, they're feeling comfortable, so that hopefully we can get more and more subs. We have had quite a few subs lately apply and we've gotten hired and we're excited about that. Um, the thing that I'm hoping to change that I wanted to just bring to your attention before I bring it to you guys to vote on. Um, over the last couple of years, our leave policy is something I've wanted to change and we've kinda keep putting it on the back burner. But Dr. Lentz has been on board with me looking at this and we are looking to change our sick and personal to just PTO. So instead of having those separated, somebody would just submit a PTO because it's, it's just better for recruitment and retention purposes. Um, I've been talking with other districts, um, in our area and in our conference and getting their policies and what they're doing and we're all kinda touching base before, before I bring that to you. But I just wanted to kinda throw that out there in case anybody had any strong feelings one way or the other. My hope is to change that policy before we get into the hiring season. I talked to our admin last week and I think all of them are on board as well. Um, but it's a great recruitment and retention option that we would like to have when we're promoting out to hiring new teachers. So I just wanted to throw that at you before I.
So what do you? What do you have now, three different banks?
Yeah.
And you're trying to condense it into one, is what you're saying?
Right, if you're certified stuff, you know, if you don't work twelve months, you get personal and sick leave. If you're twelve months, you go vacation in there as well. Um, I haven't looked at the vacation side of it, but for, for sick, for sick time and personnel, we would just like it to be paid time off.
When you bring it to us, can you do a side-by-side comparison? Kind of simplify for us, yeah, with what we have now?
It's what most businesses do now.
Yeah.
We just have personnel.
I think that's gonna go a long way with a lot of teachers in this district.
Yeah, well, it's something we wanted to change for a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah. It also lets our teachers know that, hey, if you wanna take a day off, you don't need to call us at seven thirty and let us know when it's really, you know, a personal, personal day or whatever. I don't care, I know our principals don't care. If you need to take your day, take your day, it's your day. Um, and I just think that simplifies it and I think it also just tells our staff that's coming in, like, we do support you and we do know that you need your days, so we're just trying to help in all the ways.
That's huge, thank you.
Thanks, anybody have questions for Amber? Thanks, Amber. Um, B, board candidate filings begin December.
December nine?
Nine.
December nine.
We've already talked about this?
At eight AM.
Okay, good. Five AM. Um, elevator proposal. Do you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, we have two proposals. Re- really, there's only two elevator companies, TKE, you notice, so. This is for the elevator at the high school that runs over there by, in the tall. And it needs some work. So the recommendation is to go with TKE. I, I couldn't really do a deep dive on the information on the, on the phone here, but ev- elevator work is driven by code. TK, TKE, make sure that we have everything there that aligns with code, so.
That's eighty thousand dollars less than the other.
Yeah.
What do we have now?
Uh, we have TKE right now and they've been trying to keep this thing going, like with duct tape. And work within our, not actually duct tape.
It says right here, duck not included, and I got a little confused there.
Uh, but they've been trying to keep it running just off, we have a service agreement with them. But there's, the things that are wrong with the elevator can't, they're, they're stretching to address it within the service contract. There are things that need to be addressed in a serious way, so.
Are we gonna keep a service contract with them after this, or?
I think my desire would be to stay with, they, they know the machine, um, and response time, when you only have two folks really that do this kinda work and you're in Mexico, I think is always gonna be a little bit of a challenge. But I think if we get it working right and we have people that are familiar with our building, I do think we're served better by that, so. Th- this is not like a strict this isn't governed by, by the same pol- in this policy in the same way, like going out to bid where you're almost required to go with the low because this is through a cooperative service agreement, because it's, you're kinda buying banks of hours for service work. So if we wanted to go with Otis, we could, but the recommendation is to stay with TKE. I don't think it's TKE's fault that our elevator is in the condition it is. I think it's it's cost so much to keep them running and the district didn't have two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars to to put into it. Now we do. I think if they have if we pay what needs to be done on it, it'll be in, in better shape, so.
Am I remembering wrong, but wasn't there something we wanted to do with the elevator and the sports complex too?
Yeah, that'll be another.
Another line item?
Yeah, another proposal. Yeah, this, oh, yeah, I wanna be clear about that. This, this doesn't do anything with the sports complex elevator.
We still have.
It's a lot of money for one elevator.
That's the one that went out for bid in the spring, correct?
What's that?
That's the one going out of bid.
Yeah.
Going out to bid in the spring.
Right, I think that's, that's gonna be our goal. Would really like to see us go out to bid on the, uh, high school entryway first. But I also think that the elevator in the sports complex is very important.
Agreed. I'll make a motion to approve elevator proposal from TKE. Second.
Matt?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Lynette?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Onto the gym floor. We have a.
Yeah, and it's uncomfortable to just bring one, you go out to bid, just bring one bid. And if we decide, you know, the will of the board was to, to pass on this and go back out to bid, I would understand it. But my recommendation is that we, that we go with this bid. Real difficult to get apples to apples when you start clicking around. Uh, we have, I have a colleague in a district not too far from us that just built a brand-new gym that's about the same size as ours. And to put that gym floor in is about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The difference between what we have to do and what they did is they didn't have to demolish an old gym floor, they didn't have to pay to dispose of that old gym floor, and they didn't have to fool with bleachers. Also, um, not a lot of people are aware of it, but we have a three-lane all-weather track underneath the bleachers. And I think that's a, a little difference that the bleacher company has, or the floor company has to work around.
We have.
And that is for, yeah, so like on a rainy day, you could go into our gym, pull the bleachers back and work on your block starts.
It looks like the three lanes of a combine, like an NFL combine.
Oh, I've seen it when they're.
I, yeah.
Up, but I didn't realize.
I don't know how much they're using, but they're there, we wanna keep them.
Do what?
That's your New Year's resolution.
Thank you, man. I appreciate it. Get it called out for everyone on YouTube.
They say you stay low as long as you can and be faster.
Thank you for the tips.
She's like, stop it now.
I guess I'd also like to point out that there's a lot more going on with the gym floor than just what you see. And so if you're going like price per square foot, you gotta go a price per square foot for this layer, this layer, this layer and this layer. And then also, um, the, the moisture barrier. There's, you'll see on the proposal. Our, our FSG, when they put out the bid and the bid specs, they, they had one moisture mitigation um, in mind. The, the gym floor company that's bid on it, they would prefer to use the one that they're used to dealing with. They bid it with according to the specs, but they offered a voluntary alternate. I think it's to the advantage that they, one, it's cheaper, but also if it fails, it's pretty clear this is what you called for and, and if if they do the moisture barrier and they do the install, it's kinda one, one throat to choke if it goes bad.
What is that, forty thousand dollar difference?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can't believe you said that on camera. Okay, uh, what's the warranty look like? I couldn't find that, I guess. I don't remember reading it last night in my haste.
Yeah, I can't, I could share that out later.
Comfortable with it, is it, it's not something that we're gonna be worried about?
I think we should always worry about warranties. And it's probably gonna fall on the man- manufacturer of this, not the installer.
Ultra Shield has a twenty-year warranty.
Okay.
Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, that's what I was trying to.
Out of the gates, best. Got you.
Yeah, thanks.
I was trying to get it pulled up there.
We get out of the starting gate that fast.
She already did.
Which is ten years older than most.
Starting block.
Yes, it is.
Sorry, sorry, I gotta get my camera off.
I think, I think if you decided you didn't wanna do it because you didn't have, you only had one bid, you had to bid, you advertised again, um, gets, if you don't get it scheduled pretty quick, you might not be getting it scheduled this summer because there's not a lot of people to do gym floors. Uh, the price of maple is probably not gonna go down in the next calendar year.
The only question I think I had left was demolition. Is there not a better way to repurpose? Is it in that bad of shape that we can't use it?
Yeah, I don't know. I think probably we oughta go, like, there's the, on the.
You know, we're saying we're spending cost to demolish it and, and relocate it. Is there not a way to? Well, I don't know, it's a question that I'm asking.
I'm afraid we might end up just with a big pile of boards out in the parking lot.
It'll sit for ten years. Send some of that stuff as memorabilia to, to folks.
Yeah, sell it.
Yeah, I'm sure that they will be glad to work with us to, if, if we can get organized and come up with a plan to get pieces of it. I think there are people, there's a market for it, and I don't think they wanna pay to dispose of it, so.
Like I said, if there's a cost savings or something, I know, I know it's kinda outside the scope of what we can do tonight, but at the same time.
But there are, there are places down the end where the cup is so bad. And the way it's installed. I mean, there's staples that go in at an angle, so when you tear it up, you're.
Well, I was kinda thinking along the lines of what Matt said, kinda like what him you did with the, the bricks on the, on the main stretch there outside the quad. Mr. Elbrock?
Right now, we have two different plans to cut out part of the floor. Where the, where like the, just the Gary Pilbers put on the floor, we wanna take that and mount it somewhere, like, make it a, have a wall thing. But then also, we wanna, we're, we're working on and trying to figure out the plans to take the floor, they take it out and re- people, people already requested, but it went to part of the floor, right? So how can we turn that into?
I'm sure there's somewhere in the community, right, that we could use.
There's a lot of history on that gym floor, so we don't wanna, yeah, because people are interested in having it, so, but we're gonna go with those things.
As long as we're thinking about it and we're open to it and we're not just saying, call it out in one.
Somebody's real proud of the bulldog head, I've noticed. It's kinda stretched, it's a little oblong, I don't know, maybe it warped with the moisture.
Well, I'm excited about this. I know a lot of people that I've talked to over the high school are very excited about this. And I'd like to make a motion to approve the gym floor proposal for future multiple state champions of sports teams at the Mexico High School.
What happens if we don't get multiple?
We will, we will.
We're gonna vote on this and we won't get another floor until we have multiple state champions.
No, no, no.
Scott, did you second?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Lynette?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes, motion carries seven zero and Matt is paying for disposal. Right?
Put it in my backyard.
I do wanna say, our goal is to get this started in April. That changes up some end-of-year stuff. But our priority is to get the floor down and done so that volleyball can start on time. And the main thing is, uh, graduation, if there's weather, we've moved it to the gym. Now, if there's weather, it'll be an alternative date, but that's, uh, that's.
What about like, uh?
Eighth grade promotion.
Scholarship and all that, yeah.
We're, we're working on, we have concepts of a plan to how to handle all that, but we also wanna make sure that we're not, I don't, I want our volleyball kids to be able to start volleyball practice one on the first day and to me, that's a, a bigger rock.
So how long is it gonna take from start to finish?
Well, he says there's no way that they'll be, uh, it'll run into volleyball if they start in April, so.
So volleyball starts in, in October?
No, they start practicing, same as football, like August. And if we can get it, get it done and get it out and kids can get in there and start working out and do their summer stuff, I think that's, that's a plus to.
Late run into March. Copy machine lease.
Um, yeah, uh, th- this is a di- different district than what I'm used to and that we have two companies that we deal with, copy machine lease, GFIs is up. In December, I got a proposal from them to, we wanted to continue with those fifteen machines. Also have a proposal for Marco, where they picked up those fifteen machines. You know, they have different proposal structures, like one includes copies, set of, you know, a set amount of copies. One is all strictly based off of price per copy, which is a little difficult to predict. I don't know, I, I can go into detail about the, you know, our monthly spends over the last few months, but my, uh, and then also, we've been pretty comfortable working with Marco's service techs. And I think if we had one service department to call and one building department, that we would be be a little bit easier for some folks, not that that's, we also want our copy machines to run and when they don't run, we want somebody to come and get them fixed, so we don't have a riot in the middle school, teacher's workroom, hypothetically speaking.
So I'll make a motion to approve the lease agreement with Marco.
Second. Matt?
Yes.
John?
Yeah.
Lynette?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Lynette?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Thank you all for coming.